I will call to order the business meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for Monday, August 20th, 2018. Mr. Kennedy, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Decanter.
Here.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Menon.
Here.
Mayor Holliday is absent. Mr. Hochheiser.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Thank you. We have a call. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've come to our session of public comment. Amanda, anything? Hearing none. Do we have warrants? Move to consent agenda. Do we have warrants today?
Yeah, we have three warrants. Mr. Vice Chair. The first warrant, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools, amounting in the aggregate $1,829.96, be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously.
The next warrant, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools to approve and receive and forward to the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. The amount is $11,982.22, and there are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously.
And then the last warrant, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools, amounting in the aggregate $180,098.89, be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Phenomenously. We did get late today minutes from the 8:16 business meeting. What is the will of the committee? Do you want to hold them for another month, or do you want to?
I move table until next meeting.
Okay. Gives us a chance to look. Thank you. In looking at the agenda items, Sean is going to do a number of them coming up. Then we have a discussion with a vote for the CREST board member. And then we will do the assistant superintendent's report, the superintendent's report, and we'll have a discussion. I see it as more of an open discussion of the Maske Institute. Dave's going to report out, and we'll have a conversation about that. All right, Sean, let me turn it over to you now.
Under agenda item number four, hiring update, we've been, since our last meeting, hiring, and we're almost full. So at this point, we have, and we're doing the interviews now, point two, physical education teacher at the Brezner here, and that's because of the addition of the kindergarten teacher. That section is, one section of PE is uncovered, so we're putting on a point two position. We have one instructional assistant at the high school, and then teaching staff and support staff, that's it for the entire district. We did have movement at the NOC, so as we filled the English position there with an administrator in district applied, and so we filled that, which now leaves us with assistant principal position opened at the NOC. So we'll be posting that probably, I think we posted that today or tonight, and then we're going to go through that process. In the meantime, we're working, especially with the opening of school, to assist Principal Furlong with a retired principal who will be willing to come in for the first week of school to provide additional support for Lisa Furlong and her team and the school. So that's kind of where we stand right now with hiring.
Great. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. DeAlli.
Yes.
Retired principal, where was he going in? To the high school or the middle?
At the middle school. I'm sorry.
He will fill in the assistant principal position, has been vacated.
Correct. While we go throughout the hiring process, so it'll be a temporary.
Sean, how long will the position be posted for?
Typically, it's 10 days, and most of that screening, looking at the applicant pool, within the 10 days, and we'll try to expedite that as soon as we can.
Are you, I don't know if it's a fair question, but I'll ask it anyway.
Sure.
Say it's not a fair question.
All right.
Do you anticipate interest internally?
I think so. I think it's open, you know, we're going to open this both internally and externally, and give everybody an opportunity to go through the process.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. Technology, NOC parking lot and elevator updates.
All right. So the NOC parking lot, so if you've driven by the Mullen NOC school, you've seen the new paving, which is a big difference compared to what it was earlier in the school year. So I just wanted, once again, to thank the collaboration between the city and the schools, and school committee and city council, for really having this project on the docket and getting approval. It's totally made a big difference in the front of the school, the side of the school, and obviously in the parking lot. So the next aspects of the project is the lighting, and since the lighting is custom, poles that were ordered, those will be coming in in the next, I would say, month to two months. I'll continue to provide school committee and the school community an update on that. The second aspect is the lining of the parking lot, and I'm learning a lot about asphalt.
Probably molding line, too.
That's right. So when you put down a new parking lot, it needs to settle for about 30 days or so, and then you can do the lining. If you line too early, I guess the white lines will turn gray, and you won't be able to see them. So we're going to have that. The other piece is, we're going to be adding signage around the campus to assist, you know, with crosswalks, walks for children, and those types of things. And then, once we're ready to start lining, we'll do the lining.
Sean, I had a question about lighting. Knowing that it could be 30 to 60 days.
Correct.
Is that going to be a problem for evening activities?
You know, that was my first question. So the existing lighting that was in the parking lot is still operational. So you're still going to have the existing lighting. So nothing has changed.
So it'll still be dark?
Yeah.
[laughing]
I don't know yet.
It'll still be dark, too.
Yes. What we had in the past will still be there until the new lighting comes online.
Okay, great. Thank you. Technology projects update.
Sure. And just the last piece was the elevator project. So that's up and running. Our final inspection is scheduled for this Thursday, so before the start of school, that project will be operational, and we're good to go on that. All right. Technology update. First, I just wanted to thank Dawn Scaney and his team, because there was a delay in the sense of the bids and the order. So they've been working extremely hard. They've been putting in 10 to 14-hour days. So all of the teacher stations and all of the classrooms are completed. The projectors at the high school that were ordered will be finished this Friday. They had to do some more wiring for that. The Chromebooks and the laptops that will be coming in, they're going to be imaged, and we'll be adding those as we move forward. So the existing Chromebooks that we have are ready to go, and we're going to be adding the new Chromebooks to that student inventory. So I think the opening of school, the teacher stations, the projectors, and then the updating of the Chromebooks and the imaging of that, so I think we're in great shape. And Dawn, and as I said, and his team have been working a lot of hours to get the project done and ready for the opening of school.
Quick question.
Sure.
Did a second grade at the NOC go one-to-one this year? Because last year, we had them for the sixth grade, right?
Yes.
Is a second of the three grades going this year?
Right.
So do they travel with them, and then like the sixth grade, the new sixth grade will get them? That's what I did.
Yeah.
So this year, sixth and seventh grade are going to have them?
Mm-hmm.
And the seventh grade is, I would say, more prepared for them this year than they were last year?
Jackie Russo, the technology integrator, has worked with them through last spring in helping prepare them for this year. And then, we had two very well-attended technology courses that ran over the summer. So people got additional training during that time, but that was optional. But she did do some comprehensive training with the entire grade level last spring.
Correct.
And that'll continue. It'll be ongoing.
Thank you, Sean. The item number seven is the board representative for the collaborative regional educational services and training, which is our collaborative. Each district that participates in the collaborative needs to send a person to serve on the board. Usually, it's a school committee person or a superintendent. Probably it's about one-third school committee and two-thirds superintendents at this point. Steve had been that for a number of years. I think this is, I've just finished my second year doing it, and I really don't want to hog the opportunity. So if there's anybody who has any interest, it's usually one meeting a month in Methuen. And, it's one meeting a month in Methuen. I mentioned this to Sean. If he wants to step onto the board, and I'll step off. If not, I will serve one more year, the last year that I will serve as the CREST collaborative member, if Sean doesn't want to do it. So. And then we just need to affirm that in a vote and send the minutes to them so that they can see that we're legally there. And what happens if you don't show up at the meetings for an extended period of time? They start surcharging your district. So it's kind of sent to be a shame.
Yes. So I think when Bruce and I were talking about this, I would like to serve on this committee and this board, and we were kind of looking at a transition, especially as I'm, you know, transitioning my entry plan and getting, you know, used to the district, and especially the opening of school. We were kind of looking at transitioning possibly in the fall and the winter. So that's kind of what we were talking about in our much order of school committee.
I think for Sean, as a new superintendent there, it's another opportunity to network with other superintendents that I think is really valuable, and build relationships with them. I'm very happy to do that. I'm very happy, if you want, for me to serve until the end of December. If you want to pick up from there, maybe we'll both go to the meeting in November, or something like that.
That'd be great.
To introduce you. So let me figure out how we would form that as a vote.
I move that we nominate, our point, Mr. Bruce Menon, to serve as our representative to the CREST collaborative board through the end of this calendar year, and that starting in January, our representative going forward will be a superintendent of schools, Sean DeGale.
Second.
Any discussion? Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Terrific. Good. Yeah, we'll just need to, I'll let them know by email, and then we'll follow up with minutes. Great. Assistant Superintendent Angela Bix report.
Thank you. We had a lot of professional development this summer. We ran, I think, six or seven courses and workshops for the teachers. And I'm just going to talk briefly about how each of those classes will have an impact on the students moving forward. So we ran two technology classes, one which was on Google Classroom, and the other which was a technology camp, where teachers could pick and choose what classes they wanted to take. I think that the Google Classroom coming out of that is teachers developed a stronger use of Google Classroom as a teaching tool, and they learned new ways to engage students in their learning, and enhance their ability to effectively analyze student data and use that data to help inform their decisions around instruction. Many of them also developed communication arms within their Google Classroom that they didn't have originally to close some of the communication gap with the families of the students. And they developed better planning tools through the process. The people who participated in the technology camp focused on website design. The majority of them focused on website design. They were improving their classroom websites, or updating classroom websites, or in some cases, building classroom websites. They also focused a lot on using applications for better communications on the spot, and using mobile devices to be able to do that with teachers, I mean with parents, with families. We ran a course that was on English learners and special education, helping teachers understand how to tell the difference between when an English learner is struggling because of language acquisition, and when an English learner is struggling because there's a possibility of a learning disability. That class was very well-attended, and teachers really enjoyed learning more about the finer points of teaching this population, understanding some of the regulations and law around teaching these students, and how to take action when they are concerned about the project progress that the student is making. We also ran a responsive classroom class, a responsive classroom course, and also the impact of trauma, creating trauma-sensitive schools. As you know, we've been running the four courses to build trauma-sensitive schools over the last couple of years, and we've been building cohorts of teachers who participate in all four of those courses. And at the end of that, those teachers are capable of teaching other teachers about trauma-sensitive schools. So this was the third course in that four course, in those four course sessions. So in this particular class, teachers learn about the theory, use the process, and the tools needed to understand how to approach teaching students who have experienced trauma, and implement some of those practices into their work. And then, we also ran a course this year that was taught, many of these classes, too, I want to add, were taught by our staff. So teachers in our staff were willing to share their expertise with other teachers in the district, which was really wonderful. And the people, and the teachers who participated really enjoyed learning in that format. So the other one was called Creating Effective Learning Stations. And in this class, teachers really learned how to become dynamic facilitators of learning, and creating opportunities for students to learn more independently, and/or work with a small group of students, or even in pairs, to really own their learning, but with all the supports and the resources that are needed to allow them to do that. The response from this class was phenomenal. We had teachers saying things like, "This was the best course I have ever taken, ever," you know, "through my graduate studies, anywhere." I got some communication from teachers that said, "I think this should be a requirement for everyone in the district," was really very well-received.
Who were in that one?
Lisa Alexander. Yeah, and she did a great job. So it was really nice. It really took the teacher out of the instructor role, into the facilitator role, teaching the teachers how to use, how to integrate technology in a way that allows you to do a lot of your planning before you're in front of the students, so that you are available to help the students with the application of their learning as they're learning. So it was very well-received. I think people really enjoyed that. So I've already talked to Lisa, and she's willing to offer the course again, and we're talking about expanding how we handle that. So that was really fun. I think we got, I think our teachers had many opportunities to grow throughout the summer in the professional development. And then also, as you know, we ran a literacy camp this summer, and the literacy camp was five weeks long, and we had students, kindergarten through grade six, participate in the camp. And they read books that were themed on seven strengths. And so these strengths were belonging, curiosity, friendship, responsibility, courage, confidence, and hope. So all the books that were read throughout the literacy camp had a focus on that. And because it was camp, every morning, they would start with sitting around the campfire and singing songs related to the seven strengths. It was very fun. We have a couple of videos that I'd be happy to share with you, the students doing that. Our new music teacher that joined us last year at the elementary, he was, he co-taught some of the literacy camp, and he ran the campfire songs all summer. So it was really good. The camp, you know, is intended to reduce the summer slide for some of our struggling readers, and we also incorporated about 20 minutes a day during that time of math games and math reviews, just to keep math practice active for that population during the summer. And then lastly, I talked to you in the spring about the fact that we were going to pilot a farmer's market during our summer program time this summer, and we did, and it was a great success. The farmer's market ran for five weeks also. And we had some community partners work with us in that farmer's market, and it was open to the families of any student participating in our summer programming, both the special education program and the literacy camp. Sean and I had the opportunity to attend a couple of times. The abundance of wonderful Whole Foods was great. The kids were very involved. There was an education component. Recipes were given out. It was a great success. So we just debriefed that process last week, and we decided that we're going to continue that with kind of pop-up markets throughout the year. So when there's special events running, or something like that, the market will just become a part of it. So that was, we were all very pleased with how that went.
Any questions?
I have a couple. First, can you give us a sense as to how many teachers participated in at least one of the summer courses?
Sure. Most of the classes had anywhere from 15 to 27, 28 teachers in it. Technology classes all ran at 25. They were full. The learning stations course, I think she capped at like 17 or 18. So she kept that smaller. And the ELL class had 20 or 22 participants in it. So I would say, you know, our average was probably 20 to 25 in most of the classes. Responsive classroom was smaller, because we've been training our teachers over a five-year period, so there weren't as many teachers left to be trained with responsive classroom. But I think good, we had good participation in all of them.
But overall, in terms of number of teachers then who attended at least one session, I'm assuming some of the teachers may have attended more than one session, so it's not just a sum total. I'm just trying to get a feel for how many of our teachers actually gave up of their time to participate in this kind of a program. I think that would be something good for our community to know about.
Right.
Because so often, we think of teachers, "Oh, well, they get the summer off." No, they don't.
Right.
And here's an example of it. And I'd like to recognize that.
Yeah.
And secondly, speaking of recognition, I think it's also important that we bring a list of the teachers who actually facilitated these trainings.
Sure.
So that we can recognize them publicly.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to do that. And I can get you total numbers of the teachers. The other thing that, you know, speaking to that, Nick, which is really important to note as well, is the amount of summer curriculum projects we had. So talking about teachers, you know, being off during the summer, these are teachers that are working collaboratively to enhance curriculum or to build new curriculum. And we funded about $30,000 worth of summer curriculum practice.
Again, if we have the number of teachers that were involved in that, I think that's also important for us to recognize publicly.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Can we give them, they get like PD hours for coming in for those?
For the classes?
Yeah.
It depends on the class. So some of them are offered for PDPs, and some of them are offered for in-service credit. And in-service credit would allow, a teacher could use that, much like they would use graduate credit, to move along the salary schedule. So it depends on the amount of hours that the course runs for, and the rigor of the content.
And the people who teach them also get?
The people who teach also get credit. Yes, they do. So, yes. I mean, I can tell you who taught, but I can do that more formally so you can recognize them. I'll bring you a list.
That'd be good.
Yeah, that would be great. Actually, I would love to follow up with that list of teacher facilitators with a letter from the school committee thanking them for doing that, so if we could draft a letter.
That'd be wonderful.
Thanking the teachers. I had a couple of more questions as well. This may be more than you can do right now, but particularly around the technology. I would be interested in knowing roughly which grades were represented by the teachers, how many from the elementary school, how many from the middle school, how many from the high school were attending some of those sessions. That would be really helpful, I think, just to hear that. And the other question or comment that I had would be the, now that we've sort of internalized the training for trauma-sensitive schools, I would really love a short presentation of what it is that goes on in the training, what it is, what makes a trauma-sensitive school. I'd love to have some of those teachers come in and just, you know, 15 minutes PowerPoint. I think that would be really useful to us.
Mm-hmm. I'm sure they'd love to do that.
And for the technology, is there sort of ongoing monitoring? Are they developing a PLC out of that, or how is the follow-up? Who'd they go to if they have more questions?
Well, they would go to the integrators, you know, would be first line. They would go to the integrators. One of the things that our integrators are doing with the courses is they're developing online modules, so that if you take the class, for example, the Google Classroom class that just ran, Jackie Russo was the instructor for that class, and she developed modules for Google Docs, for Google Sheets, for Google Classroom, so all the various aspects of Google, so teachers could work at their own pace throughout the time that they were in the workshop. But once that classroom was formed, all of those tutorials are available to them at any time. So anybody who had participated in that class, that classroom remains open to them with all of those resources, and Jackie available to them to answer questions. So that is one way. The integrators are always available for the teachers during the school year, to support them as they're working through projects. Lisa Alexander's class, which focused on the learning station, Lisa's actually doing ops or follow-up. Lisa's actually doing ops, follow-up observations, two follow-up observations with the teachers this fall that participated in that course as they implement the projects that they put together. So that she can help them. She can go in and do a peer observation and help them and support them as they start this process in their classroom.
Terrific.
Yes, I did, I want to follow up and thank Assistant Superintendent Beck for all her hard work in the summer organizing all of this PD. And I had the great fortune of attending a lot of these professional developments. And as part of the trauma-sensitive schools, that workshop, I think it was the fourth cohort through, so they were graduating, and as part of their cohort, they had to present to the superintendent. So they were working on a presentation to the superintendent and school committee on what trauma-sensitive schools, you know, is and how it's going to really help us. So I think we already have in draft form that group. So I'm really excited. I think they would love to present it not only to the school committee, but to the community at large. Yeah, and just to kind of really see some of the challenges that we're all facing working with kids. And that's why, you know, my philosophy is, you know, today's day and age, you can't do it on your own. You know, parents can't do it on their own, schools can't do it on their own, business community. And it's really bringing us all together to help kids. So I'm, I'd be excited to see that presentation.
Yeah, I think it would be great for the community. Any other comments or questions?
I guess what you just said made me think about the parent series that they have. I said they, like they use services in the charter school get-together. Because I would bet that there are a number of parents of kids who have been through trauma who don't understand the short and long-term psychological and academic effects of the experiences. And perhaps, and sometimes they book those events years out, but if they haven't booked them yet, that's a really important topic. Maybe somebody could come and do a community forum about that. If not, if not through them, maybe we can do one on our own, but that's always, those are pretty well-attended series.
Very good. I'd be able to follow up on that.
Good idea.
I would think also, we had talked in the spring about having a parent technology night. So the parents have some clue with what's going on, what the kids are seeing, what classes look like these days, what the Google Suite is, I'm sure they're...
Yeah, I just, I don't want to interrupt, but no, I agree. I think, you know, it's part of the entry plan for me and getting to understand the community at a much deeper, in-depth, that's a very important aspect is, you know, when we are talking about community engagement, to really provide resources for parents. Because every year, there are new challenges. If it's, you know, the use of technology, social-emotional, the opioid crisis that we're all dealing with. So as part of that is to provide resources and workshops for parents, and try to do it in a way that we can bring in a lot of parents at once. So Assistant Superintendent Beck, myself, the leadership team, as part of our retreat, we've been talking about that and what would that look like. So anticipating within the near future, you'll start seeing us offering these workshops for parents. So we, as I said, so we bring people to the table, and we're all on the same page and trying to do what's best for kids today. That's what it's all about.
Great.
Did we, can I just ask, did we, when last year when we had the sixth grade integration with the Chromebooks, did we have something like that, a night with the parents?
We didn't. No, we didn't.
The year before we did?
Yeah, we did it right after the building project was over. I think a year out from the building project. We wanted the parents to see how we were integrating all the new technology. And so we set up something at the NOK Library, and we did stations, and the parents rotated, and community members had the opportunity to rotate through stations on how we were using the technology in the classroom. Remember that first?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
I do.
So, so a night like that is very beneficial. You know, they got a short presentation to understand the different applications that were being used.
Great. Thank you. Turn it over to the superintendent.
Try to keep it as brief as I can. We've been busy.
Ed Mullen is smiling down at us, I think.
Well, first of all, since I started on July 2nd, and even before then, continued working on my entry plan and as part of the Friday memos, all the different stakeholders within the community that I've been meeting with, trying to get a background on our great strengths of the school system, some of our challenges. And then really opportunity for me as a superintendent of schools, formulating our goals and really just, just working together. So that's been wonderful the last six to seven weeks. I had the great fortune of attending a city council meeting where I was introduced as the new superintendent. I had the opportunity to say a few words on behalf of the great school system that we have. And, you know, once again, just want to thank both the school committee and city council in the holiday for the NOK parking lot and moving that project forward. It's greatly appreciated. All of the summer professional development that Assistant Superintendent Beck just reported out, it just allows various staff members to attend, and then we have our staff members presenting. But going back to the commitment of the faculty and support staff here during the summer, you know, working and, you know, enhancing their practices within the class. So that says a lot about a school community and the faculty and support staff that are willing to give up summertime hours to come in and to do that. So really proud of that. And I've had a great opportunity to attend a lot of those and meet the staff this summer. Our DESE onsite review that we've provided information, and we talked about, we had tentative dates. The October 26th is where all of the documents need to be uploaded through the state. In addition, a tentative onsite visit is January 7th through the 9th. Where we'll have a team, DESE team, will come out. They'll be doing interviews, reviewing documents. We're going to try to postpone that a little bit. You know, as I'm just walking, not walking, but entering the district for six weeks, we want our report to be a true reflection on what we're doing well in what areas. And I think, you know, for us to try to upload everything by the end of October would be a lot. So I'm going to put a call into the DESE liaison, and just to see if we can move that to December. So we're not looking like a year postponement, just another month or so, so we can get all of the documents that they'll be seeking in order. And then that would allow us, I really believe, to get some great feedback from the state. So right now, those are the tentative dates. If I have success in moving the visits and our documents, I will, I will let school committee know immediately.
Sean, I just, I recall the last time we talked about this, that part of the, part of the visit to the district is talking to school committee members as well.
Correct.
So it's kind of good to peg those, those dates as needing some availability.
Right. So the six areas, so we have the full review. So the six areas are the leadership and governance, which encompasses leadership, central office and district leadership, and governance is the school committee. Curriculum instruction and assessment, I think for all audits, it's always a priority. Human resources, professional development, and student support, which was some of those topics we were just talking about. And then the financial and asset management, kind of how we do our budget and how we present that. So I think there'll be, those topics, there'll be a lot of information that we have to provide. But as I was saying, I think we're, getting quality feedback on that would be extremely helpful for me as the superintendent and for the district. When we're talking about the commitment of the educators here in the district, we had an opportunity, a short opportunity, to send that, that team out to the CSSR, the Center for Secondary School Redesign, which was formerly known as Breaking Ranks. And they, we brought a team out to the DEEPLE Learning Summit in Connecticut. And we brought Lisa Furlong, Mike Testa, Liz Kinsley, our STEM coordinator, and Emily Russen, the literacy coordinator, and myself. So they had about a week and a half to see if they could attend this workshop with no pressure. You know, I just knew it was a great learning opportunity for us, and that's the team. And a few of those people left vacation time to go out to Connecticut to learn about DEEPLE learning. And it was really about the culture of inquiry, the power of networking. So within that group, the people that we worked with were exemplary schools in the New England area, in all those different areas. So we're going to continue to be part of that networking, which is, really ties into our strategic plan, which was like really perfect timing for us. The other aspect of that is shared leadership, student agency, and then student-driven decision-making, student-driven learning. So when you, when you hear those topics, and we got to work with the educators from Connecticut, it really tied it back into our strategic plan. So we're really excited about that. Also, the Mayor Moral Learning Area Foundation project in front of NHS. We met and with a group and Mr. Robert Moral himself, and kind of looking at a three-phase project that the city and the schools are going to be coordinating with a possible groundbreaking event in the fall. So we'll have more details for the next school committee meeting with that. But, you know, once again, you talk about tradition, pride here in Newburyport, and then the honor of Mayor Moral way back when the high school was built, back, and I think in the thirties. It's pretty, it's pretty impressive. So that was great. And Mr. Cole took me to the fifties reunion where I met a lot of these great Newburyport graduates. So that was, that was wonderful. The NOK administration, along, NOK and the Mullen administration with Andy Egmont. So the idea of put it away for a day, or away for the day, is really does two things. It's about cellphone use for a day, and they're going to work together with students and the families of one day, of students not using their cellphones, and parents with limited use of the cellphones, developing some independence for students, but also really emphasizing family quality time and not relying on our technology devices. So that's, I think, can be a neat little day and a neat little project for the community. The last couple of things, an important state and federal grant submission. And once again, Assistant Superintendent Beck and her team, along with Nancy Lysick and Christina Guttelli, really put together all of our grants, and the state has come up with a new format. So it was not easy. It's only, it was in one workbook, which was a lot different. I was used to writing Title II grants and Title I grants in the separate, and now they consolidated. So when I went into the room to help, I couldn't help. I thought I had all the answers, and it's a whole new, whole new format. So the team worked extremely hard, working with the DESE, and got that submitted, so, and for approval. So, you know, I'm really proud. Thank you for all of their efforts. The other piece that, we also had a report, is the safety report. And working with the marshal and the police department, fire department, and that whole safety committee and all that work was extremely beneficial when we had to do our reporting to the state. I had the report, and working with the marshal, we could just kind of go through a lot of the checklist that had already been done. And we're going to be looking to enhance school safety and continue to make that a priority for the district. So I just wanted to thank that safety committee for all their work for the past two years. Our mentoring program started today. I was there a few times. Tomorrow, I get to go on the tour, the bus tour with the new employees, because I am a rookie also. So I get to, to learn about Newburyport in the morning. But we have a great, I guess, cohort of new teachers that are really going to help enhance a lot of the great things we're already doing. And last but not least, we had our second leadership team retreat, the extended leadership team. We focused on our norms, really the strategic plan, and at the end of that, developed a common goals for the whole district. And the idea of that is for all of us to move in the same direction. And everything that we did was really tied back to that strategic plan, which is really giving us the vision of some of the goals that we would like to accomplish this year. So it's been a lot, a lot of work the last few weeks, but I think we're in a great, great spot. And, you know, going back to our retreat as a school committee board, you know, we're kind of building off of the positive momentum there. Now working with the leadership team, it's the same, the same feeling that I have that we're all pulling together and doing, and doing what's right for the district and students and families. So first six weeks, it's been, seven weeks now, it's been going great, and I appreciate the opportunity. Do you have any other questions on that? I also sent out our first-day agenda for August 27th. That went out to faculty and extended leadership team, also with a welcoming letter, which I forwarded that to the school committee, so you have that too. And we'd love to have you attend if you're available on the 27th in the morning.
All right. Takes place at the high school?
It's going to be at the NOK.
It's, thank you. The last subject that you touched on, working with leadership team on goals, actually dovetails really nicely into Dave's sort of leading a discussion about the workshops he attended at the Mass Association of School Committee Institute. Because he did attend one on goal setting, but I thought it was terrific. So Dave, if you'd online, sort of just walking us through.
Sure. So I went, I only got to go to one of the two days there, but there were three sessions I attended. One on goal setting, one on school start times, and the other one on social-emotional learning and restorative practices. The one on goal, I tried to lay out like the highlights, so I really feel the need to read through this. But there, the big picture that they were talking to people about is how important it is to have operating district goals. And those goals are going to be the things that each piece of the district could latch on to. So, you know, you figure out, if this is what the, this is the directions the district wants to go in, what is it that the superintendent's going to do? What is it the building administration's going to do? What is it the school committee is going to be responsible for? How do we set up the teacher goals, both their student learning goals and their professional growth goals, to sort of dovetail on that, so we're all kind of funneling in on the big picture? You know, they said, without something overarching to work towards, you could get a lot of teachers and a lot of people doing good work, but it's all kind of going off in the same direction. And it doesn't have that sense of we're in this together as a school district, working towards, you know, a collaboratively decided end or two, like depending on how many, you know, goals. And so, you know, they were talking about, you actually set it up, who owns, what is it, who owns it? What are the actionable steps? What's the timeline? The two pieces they really stretched, you know, to talk about what potential roadblocks to research. Everything, and this was kind of the school committee filter, everything has to go through policy and budget filters, because if you can't afford it, I mean, it's just kind of pie in the sky dreaming. And if it, if it's up against policy, you have to have those... And if it, if it's up against policy, you have to have those considerations before you even do too much work with it. They said that we could talk about, it helps to understand what professional development's going on in the schools. Because, you know, like Angela, like you did tonight, this is how it impacts student learning, this is how it filters up to the goals, this is how it meets, whether they're in PLCs or, you know, top-down led professional development, whatever the structure is for the day, it all connects together. And then when they come to us, we understand, oh, this is what you're doing and this is how it connects. So everyone, and it's much more, their suggestion was that it's much more specific and actionable than how, oh, this is part of, you know, reframing teaching and learning, or this is part of safe and supportive, like, like to try to be as specific as possible. They talked a lot about SMART goals, you know, and having those, those pieces, this is actually what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, this is how it's going to impact kids, this is what you're going to see. And they said it also, if everyone's working on it together, it should open up a culture where you can talk about things that aren't going well. That it's not just, hey, this is our, this is where we're knocking it out of the park. Like, hey, we're having a real issue with this, we need to do something different, or we need more people on board, or we need somebody else's eyes on this, or, you know, that it has to be this open collaboration. And if we're all working on it, then, you know, someone at the BRES might learn something from somebody at the high school, because it's all topical. And I thought that was really important. So if you guys want to talk about them one by one, or have any questions, or?
I think this is a, a great outline that we ought to at least discuss in the context of the goals that the superintendent brings back to us after they've had a chance for taking a look at it. I, I am excited about, about some of the, the things here. And one of it is a very specific tieback to the strategic plan, where we don't just say, oh yeah, well, and this supports a strategic plan, or it's informed by the strategic plan, but where we can go back and say specifically, this is addressing this initiative within the strategic plan. That gives us an opportunity to talk about the content of the strategic plan on a constant basis. Not only to each other so that we remain committed to it, it's not this kind of amorphous thing that is floating up there. And also talk about it to the community, so that the community understands that the strategic plan is happening, that we are working towards it, and what is involved in it. So I, I like that, that whole idea of specificity. The other thing that I liked a lot about this, Dave, is the whole concept of roadblocks and identifying the roadblocks. It takes the personalization away from the issues. And it allows people to talk about, hey, you know, if we talk about roadblocks, I can talk to my colleagues, I can talk to the school committee, we are looking for solutions. If we talk about problems, you get defensive. And I, I have found just that change in, in terminology is significant. We use it in the company where I work, and we're constantly talking about roadblocks. And, and it's okay, it's okay to fail at things. If you learn or you figure out solutions that will help you move forward. It's okay to identify what things are, are causing you to perhaps not meet your goals. So that your, you, your colleagues, or your, the other people that are working with you can help identify solutions for that. And you're not going it alone. And so it's, it's a tremendously collaborative process, and I applaud that. I think this, those are two aspects of this write-up that I particularly found very, very useful.
The whole roadblock thing in education is very UDL, Universal Design for Learning Language from Castle. They're talking about, let's set up the goals in the classroom and then figure out what are the roadblocks that students are going to have. Because I think we could all start to model that mindset that here's a goal, here's something that we know is going to be a problem to that goal, we're going to find creative ways to work through it, because we still want to reach that goal. And no one's going to, how do I say it? No one's going to mark us down for not getting there first try. Because I think, you know, ultimately, at least the way I, I hope education's going, we will start, stop holding kids' initial struggles against them.
And I think the, the concept of roadblocks implies that you're going down the road. You may find, find them in the process, it doesn't imply, we're going to identify what the threats are to doing this initiative upfront, and we're going to work, find our way to work around it, and then everybody go, has to go and meet their goals. No, it's, let's proceed down the road, and if we run into a roadblock, let's talk about it. And they're going to be peering throughout the process, and that's, that's what's really important. It becomes much more active than, than what we're doing here.
Yeah, Dave, my, my feedback is similar to Nick's. And one of the things that I really appreciated in my conversations, which happen on a weekly basis, certainly with Sean, is that in, in filling me in on, on the work that the leadership team is doing, they're really looking to the strategic plan and tying initiatives into the strategic plan and coming up with goals that are very specifically driven by and aligned with the strategic plan. So I think we're going to be hearing a lot more of that, that kind of conversation. And the way I think it's going to be framed going forward for everybody is, what is the action we're going to take so that this happens? And then this will then happen with kids. I just really have a sense, it's, it's just been perpetually on, on the agenda with Sean and the work that he's doing with the leadership team. So I, I was really excited when I read these, because it just, it does really seem like things are starting to line up in a way that, that we're all going to be moving in the same direction. It's very exciting. So that's great. The next workshop.
Could I just ask one other question related to that? Because Nick mentioned it, and I think you're leading to it. And I guess my own, and I'm going to use a two thousand and three example. Back in two thousand and three, our school district fashioned a strategic plan. And not long after Governor Romney cut chapter seventy by twenty percent and eliminated transportation reimbursements. So you basically had a plan with a bunch of revenue stripped out of it. And why I bring that up is I think, call them roadblocks, call them barriers, I think it's important to review your strategic plan to see what those things are doing to them. And to find out what resources you're going to need to move key things forward that I always call priorities. And I'm not against any of the language here, but I just find that as a school committee, we have very little access to funds. And I think as, as a school committee and with the help of the administration and leadership team, we need to define what our priorities are. And then seek to make sure those get funded so that we can follow through with the goals of strategic plan. But my, my initial comment starts with, are we planning any regular reviews of the strategic plan? To see if anything in the environment has changed, to see what other things we need to, you know, deal with. You know, Dave's mentioned, you know, the, the three areas that he's, went to workshops on, social emotional learning, the, the whole goal process. And then earlier, and we later start school start times, those are all, could be factors that, you know, blend into, okay, do we need to tweak, reset, how do we build these things into what our strategic plan is? So I just, I don't want us to, which is, I want us to regularly review that strategic plan. And I'm not saying we don't, but I'm not sure when we're going to do it again, and I think it's important to do.
I would imagine that your work with the superintendent, your work with the leadership team, especially around SMART goals, now that you're setting like, you're like actionable goals with timetables. I mean, I think that will continually bring up the strategic plan as you, you know, look to meet some of those goals, since they're tied back to it. So I'm guessing that's a process that's going to, you're going to keep revisiting throughout the year, I guess.
Exactly. And, you know, back to talk about our retreat, along both days, really looking at the strategic plan to pull out actionable goals that, that we, you know, all twenty extended leadership team members can work together on. So making goals specific enough that they're actionable for all of us as a extended leadership team to work towards. And I think after our, the second day, we, we all came out of there feeling pretty good, taking, you know, the, the great strategic plan that's been created, setting up our goals. And then also what's really built into that strategic plan, when we pulled out of it, is community engagement. Reaching out to the NEF, reaching out to alumni groups, reaching out to the business community, which ultimately, when we're looking at doing it with specific kids, we're going to need all of these stakeholders to the table and bring them back. And as part of, you know, my entry plan is to really work with some of these community groups to help us attain our goals and establish, reconnect and establish that as part of, you know, what, what we're kind of be doing. And, and really to tie in, tie it back to strategic plan, there's a lot of community stakeholders in the process of creating it. Now we're kind of in the middle of this strategic plan, let's bring some of these stakeholders back to the table and, and see where we're at. So I'm glad to hear the questions and, and the insight of the school committee, because we've been having those, those same conversations as the district leadership team. So, and that's why I think the priorities of this community is the students and the families. And I think we're all, you know, from all of these different leadership boards within this great city, I think we're all talking the same language. And it's really just for us to organize it, so we're all moving in the same direction. But, yeah, we, we've had a lot of these conversations in the last six weeks. And I don't know, did you want to add?
No, I would agree with that. I just wanted to also add that as we did this grant writing this year,
Yes.
all of our goals that we wrote into the grants for the state are all tied to the strategic plan. So we match them all to the strategic plan.
So I, I think, two things. One, that if we follow through this process and we come to a roadblock, and we're, you know, at that point where we have to bring in other people, we can then reach out with very specific asks. Be like, hey, you know, you know, NEF, or hey, you know, Chamber of Commerce, we need this. Not, not like, hey, can you just like sort of, you know, ethereally help with the schools, but we need this very specific thing. And we had talked about that before, like the more specific the ask is. I was thinking about that today, I saw the Parks Foundation has a, they're, they're looking for a law, a mower to mow the Bartlett Mall. And they're trying to, you know, fundraise for that. And I was like, that's the very specific type of thing that's going to happen for them, because it's, people know exactly what they're talking about. We know, we need this thing, and it needs to go up that hill, and you can picture it.
Not, not only do I live across from the Bartlett Mall, my son has been cutting the grass there all summer.
Carefully.
Parks Department, very carefully. You don't even want to know what they have to do to cut the grass.
Can only imagine.
So yes, I, I think what I would add to that is relative to what Steve is saying, that, you know, how are we going to review it? You're going to hear more and more conversation, and it's going to become more and more formal, and we're going to try to set up some structures around community engagement. And one of the things that the leadership team is recommending as part of the community engagement is that literally that we go back to the people who helped us write the strategic plan. So in that regard, these are people who've sort of been out there for two or three years. Now we're going to bring them back in, and we're going to have to talk about what we've done, and we're going to have to talk about what we want to do. And I think that, that it's going to be a, it may not be a formal process, Steve, but I, I get the feeling it's going to be a very organic process.
No, that's really good to hear, because it's important to have those same voices come back and comment and share again. That's good to hear.
It's all very timely, this, this workshop was very timely.
And then at some point, we as a school committee should figure out what's our role. What do we want to have happen? Because, you know, before we know it, we'll be writing that review again, and it'll help us understand.
I think, I think it's important for us to, as soon as we get what Sean and his leadership team are thinking about, we get that. And the first question we ask ourselves when we review that is, what does this mean to us? You know, how are we an enabler and not a roadblock?
Right.
So that?
At our January retreat, if it happens weather permitting, next year, we could make that part of, like the, the lion's share of the agenda. How are we doing halfway through? The start time session was, was a really interesting conversation. Because I don't think there were many original questions in the audience. Everyone wanted to know how, you know, a couple districts who were brave enough to present pulled off a couple things. You know, I don't even know how to say it, Menominee, Monemoy?
Monemoy.
Monemoy? Monemoy was there, and Melrose was there. The woman from Melrose was pretty funny, because she just said, we went and did it. They don't have buses, so it wasn't even part of their conversation. And everyone else who had complaints, they kind of just went and did it. Sort of like, I don't know if you guys got a chance to read the article about Burlington? Ooh, I didn't even know they were working on it personally, but it seemed they were working on it long enough that they're starting it this year.
Starting next year, aren't they? Didn't they have it on a one-year delay?
I think it was last year, though.
Yep.
Last year was the delay.
Okay, last year to this year?
Yeah, I think they were, said they were starting it this fall. They said they liked, they liked the research, thought about half an hour, realized it wasn't enough, they're going for it. They had the same woman who we had, Judy Owens, came and, and speak to them. So, you know, I put down a couple, you know, talking points. So like in Melrose, it's pretty much, everyone's got that golden hour time that people seem to think is the perfect time, between eight and eight-thirty for everyone to start, so they, they have, they're able to do that. They have a couple, both districts said they have a couple clubs meeting before school. Hockey and swimming are always morning sports, just because you can't get ice or pool time anywhere, it seems. So they are allowing practices, but they are, as much as possible, committed to not letting people hold official meetings before school, because that's not really the point. They said some kids are going in for extra help on occasion, but it's not, they don't want regular scheduled things. They did stagger an IA because the guy from Monemoy said that you can't just start the schools later and think that people are going to show up later. There's always going to be people who show up at the same time. And you realize it wasn't just two or three people, that there was a chunk of families who were still coming early. So they just scheduled an IA, and those people go into the cafeteria. And they have like a, a morning together, just hanging out for a little while. Monemoy did the flip. So they were, the elementary schools did start at eight fifty-five, and then they went back to seven forty-five this year. And the secondaries start, were at eight o'clock, and now they're at eight forty-five. So their, their secondaries are going really late. I think Burlington said they were going to eight thirty, if I'm not just remembering off the article. Melrose also did eight fifteen, somewhere in that zone. You know, they're, essentially the, the conversation boiled down to a lot of the things you've been talking about. The science is solid, nothing's ever perfect, so we don't have a perfect schedule now, we won't have a perfect schedule then, there will be flaws in everything that anybody ever does, so you just have to believe in the science or not. Focus has to be on the research done about the benefits to students, not what ifs of the sports or the habits of adults. Those things work themselves out with the schedules we have now, they will work themselves out. They said that the superintendent and the administration have to lead the work, because there's too many things that, like we found here, parent groups just can't do. And even school committee just can't do. So it really has to get in the athletic directors. Everyone was talking about the Middlesex League Athletic Directors, who came together and said, okay, we can make this happen collectively. this happen collectively. So, they're big, and I think that was the same thing in the Southern Maine group that we had talked about last year, who, uh, um, put that together. They talked about, um, the elementary student piece and, you know, because I know here a lot of the parents are concerned about, well, what are the effects of the elementary student? Both presenters says, said all elementary students will be secondary students in a few years, therefore it benefits everybody in the district to do what's good for the secondary students. And there is no, there's no sense that, that moving forward, moving the elementary schools earlier to do the flip is harmful to elementary students, so there's really no, they didn't find any roadblock beforehand, and they haven't seen any since implementation. Although Melrose is just starting now, so they were not able to talk about implementation. She goes, we'll let you know next year. And they also said it's really important not to push this into committee. So, both these districts, they did it, they had open conversations with the school committee, and everybody in administration got on board because it's going to affect everybody. And so, they said, don't push it to committee, was their advice. I think Winchester also, now that I'm looking at my, my own notes, Nashby and Winchester and Burlington this summer announced, go backwards, or forwards, or whatever language you wanna use. I don't know if you guys have any conversations or questions or...
Yeah, I have some thoughts.
Go ahead, yeah.
It, in my conversations individually with people, and you've heard me say, say it publicly, um, that I really think it's important that if this thing is gonna go forward, it's gonna go forward with superintendent, the administration taking leadership roles and making it happen. I agree with that. I think, and I've talked about us having a lessons learned conversation about the process we've engaged in up to now. And I think that that would be really important because it'd allow us to, I think, very publicly identify what some of the roadblocks were, but the secondary value to having that conversation and having it publicly is that it brings Sean up to speed to exactly what's going on. You know, got access to the research, but sort of the nuances, kind of the meandering that we did to try to make it happen, he doesn't have that history. So, in, in empowering him to, to move this forward, he's gotta be up to speed on it. And again, that, up to speed, not so much on the research, but up to speed on, on how have we managed it in the community up to now, what's been working, where are the roadblocks? And I, and Sean and I, at each of our meetings, have been wrestling with this, um, and I, we will have that open conversation, we will have it at an upcoming school committee meeting soon, um, and from there, we will, we will formulate our plan. Sean, do you want, anything you wanna add to that?
No, I, I think, um, you know, being in the Middle Sex League, um, as the assistant superintendent of Wilmington, there was a lot of discussion, um, and we, we saw the same, um, presenter regarding late start. It's every community that you meet, um, and, you know, when, when you look at, you know, late start, I think it also goes back to our strategic plan, uh, it is in there, uh, looking at flexible scheduling, when you're, I mean, you tie all of that to Twenty First Century Learning, you know, block scheduling, flexible scheduling for different schools. So, I think that conversation is already built into our strategic plan. I think it's really important to, this, as I'm entering, you know, doing my entry plan, you know, there, there's a lot of things, uh, that we have, um, you know, down the road, you know, the contract negotiations I'm thinking of for the break, but I really would like to start engaging our community, as we were saying, um, the people that wrote or helped write, all the stakeholders within this great community, uh, the strategic plan, bring them back to the table and start having some of those conversations too. Because I think it's a, it's a very important discussion where you do need, I think, community input, um, you know, and, and how is that gonna affect the overall strategic plan and where, and where we wanna go. So, I think it is absolutely a big aspect of it, and we need to have those conversations.
I think some, at some level, on a timeline, we have to be cognizant of, I think last time we went to put this together, you know, kindergarten registration really came up as a, you know, kind of time at which we should be able to let people know what we're doing. And so, I think that was like the beginning of January, so I don't know if that timeline still holds true this year, but to work backwards and to figure out, um, you know, how, how quickly we need to start if we wanna think about, viably think about nineteen for next September, and then, you know, the nineteen-twenty school year, um, if that's a possibility, or are we gonna, you know, really push it out, out? But I think one of the reasons why we ended up with tabling it after three years is because we kept losing the conversation to the timeline, or losing the timeline to the conversation, and it, uh, we never made it in time. It was like, hey, we'll try it next year, and then we, you know, school years happened quickly.
And, and just, uh, just going back to the, a couple of the districts you mentioned is, um, I, I know those superintendents personally, you know, they've had, um, one tenures in those districts, um, which is, which is great because when you have those conversations, they've already developed within the community, I think, a great working relationship, they've developed, um, you know, trust, uh, among, I think, the school system and the city, and so there's a lot of those X factors. My only hesitation, um, you know, as we move forward, is if these types of decisions are really, really important, and, you know, I've been doing this a long time, since the age of nineteen, um, not a superintendent, that would be pretty good, um, but just working within communities. And, um, I just really think you, you need to, to do it right, um, in the sense of, with a lot of community buy-in, and really showing, you know, the benefits of, um, you know, for kids, as we know, it's, it's beneficial for their mental health, but also how does, how would it impact the academics, how does it impact, uh, the family? Because I think there's a lot of districts, um, that have tried to move this way and done it poorly, and that can have, I think, uh, everlasting impacts on a district. You know, regardless of who the superintendent is, if, um, it can, it can have a negative impact on a district that takes many years to get over. So, for me, only being here six weeks, um, and I think we're making a lot of gains, I think we've already accomplished a lot, um, in developing trust and rapport, uh, with the leadership team, and, and, you know, we've already been meeting with the unions. Um, I really just wanna have an opportunity when school starts to really start engaging the community. Um, you know, the parent focus groups that I plan on doing, uh, student focus groups that I plan on doing, and really going back to, um, the strategic plan. And as I said, it is in there, uh, for discussions on the flexible scheduling, late start's also in there, but there's also a lot of other important aspects of that strategic plan, too, and then kinda all of us, and, and just trying to, uh, work together and figure where, where all this falls into place. So, I would hate to...
I think it's...
Put a timeline on, on something that, you know, I, uh, we haven't even started school yet, so, I mean, right now, I wouldn't have a timeline.
Um, I, I would, um, I would suggest that we set this, uh, lessons learned conversation for an upcoming, upcoming school committee meeting, certainly, probably best reserved for the second meeting in September. And we'll have that conversation about what, what happened and what we learned from that. I think, um, we will also begin, uh, for, for example, it's, it's gonna move forward on a bunch of different levels. I know that as we prepare for contract negotiations, we wanna make sure that we have a contract that allows for, allows us the flexibility of being able to do that. So, um, as we begin to enter into contract negotiations, we're gonna wanna make sure that we've got, even if, if it ends up being a placeholder, we're gonna wanna talk about that, um, as part of our conversation with teachers. So, um, it, it'll be moving forward on a couple of different ways, but I think after we have the conversation, it'll be a lot easier to really strategize about, about, you know, how are we gonna, how are we gonna, uh, it, how are we gonna surface a lot of the experience of other school districts in doing this? How are we going to approach and, how are we going to approach athletics and, and, uh, and the Cape Town district? So, I think that, that these will logically begin to fall together, but we will have the conversation in the second, second meeting in September. Okay? Great.
When does, just curious, do we know when the athletic directors for the Cape Town League meet?
Yeah, they usually have monthly meetings.
Does that, okay, okay.
Yep.
So, the, in the third piece, the, they talked about social emotional learning, um, and I set up, they had this quadrant where the level of control goes up the Y-axis and the level of support goes across the X-axis. Truth be told, I kinda threw this together quickly and didn't have the time to figure out how to do that on the computer, so I just wrote it out for you guys in the four quadrants. But it's really, all things are heading towards the upper right in the restorative section where there is a high sense of control, which means that there are expectations for people to meet, and the idea is that we support people getting there. All the other quadrants have the flaws, like the high control, low support means, I don't really care who you are, I'm going to punish you into submission until you do what we tell you. Or, um, the low control, high support means, I love, it's kinda like the camp counselor model, where I love you, I'm your friend, I'm here for you, but we're not really going anywhere with this, we're just kinda hanging out and I'm being a good guy for you. So, schools, you know, the, the restorative model says, schools have expectations for people, academic and social emotionally, and we have to help people get there, so we have to support them, we have to work with people in order to get them there, um, and that's really everything we do, from discipline to classroom language, to the culture in the hallways, to, you know, suspension policies and all those sorts of things have to be geared towards, how do we work with kids and work with teachers to get everybody to those high levels of expectations?
Yeah, um, I think that's terrific. In my work in restorative justice, a, a restorative approach is very much a community approach. It's like, we're all in this, what happens to one person affects other people, and, you know, we really become partners in moving forward, so this is really helpful.
Thank you. How many, uh, people attended the workshop? Was it different for each, each one?
I would put a guess that there were maybe a hundred people there for the morning I was. Yeah, I would, I would put a guess of about a hundred people from all over. Interestingly enough, and I, and I find this a lot of things, I always find the North Shore, I think, to be underrepresented when I go to statewide events.
Yeah.
Like, I never meet anybody from, you know, Peabody or Salem or anything like in this area, Haverhill, it's always towns I've never heard of before, and, and people are always like, oh, I traveled all the way from...
Monemoy.
Monemoy, and I'm like, okay. Uh, especially because, I'd say as, as a non-Massachusetts guy, people don't speak in counties here, so that everyone names their little town. It's a, it's not like I come, I've come from Essex County, like in New York, everything was by county, so you could have a sense of where people were coming from.
Right.
In Massachusetts, you're like, where? Everyone's from like their own five square mile of, of earth. And, so it was interesting, but I, I did meet a lot of people and they were, um, so I would guess about a hundred. The rooms were packed, people were pretty into it.
Great.
School committee people, the, for the mask, are very, very supportive, very on board with, I thought they were great.
I don't know if we have any, thank you, Dave.
Yeah.
And thanks for preparing the notes.
Sure.
Nice to be able to refer back to. I don't know if we have any committee reports?
None. Can I ask a question about that, though?
Sure.
I know the mayor at our retreat kinda threw out some things about committees, and is there a plan to have a discussion about those, or is that just something that...
Let me talk a little bit about the twenty-ninth, the retreat, the twenty-ninth. What Sean and I anticipate is, and we've got a confirmation, Michelle McNulty, who is our attorney that we use for negotiations, is gonna be able to be present for the first part of the retreat and talk to us about open meeting law, changes in the open meeting law, and dealing with social media and, and...
When is this?
This is the twenty, it's the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, workshop.
Of August.
Yeah, five o'clock, right?
Yeah, five o'clock.
We have a meeting the twenty-ninth of August?
Work, similar workshop model that we use.
Okay. Um, so, so what I would encourage people to do, at least for that part of what we're gonna be doing at the retreat, think about your questions for Michelle. Then, we were also gonna talk about, we're gonna talk about committees. Sean, what else would you...
I think that was about really engage in the, the community engagement tied to that strategic plan.
Right. I mean, I think both Sean and I have some thoughts about, about community engagement as a, kind of more overarching, um, mission for us, and how are we gonna do that? And I think a lot of things will flow from that, a lot of good things. So, we'll talk about that. So, and then at that point, we'll, we'll, we'll see what makes sense to us in terms of standing committees.
Okay. Sounds great.
Nothing further?
Are we moving the first meeting in September? Didn't we talk about that?
It's Tuesday.
It is Tuesday. I thought we were gonna move even further.
It's, we're moving it to, uh, room, I think it's one eighteen.
But still Tuesday, the fourth.
Yeah, we didn't change the day, we, we kept the same date, we just moved it.
How do the election? No, because I can see why you'd say that, because when we originally brought it up to us, Sean mentioned that, how the days are open, but then Arizona comes to it.
Okay.
It's kind of the fourth, we just need a room in the high school.
So, it's the fourth?
Yeah.
At the high school?
At the high school.
Sean, do we have a place for the twenty-ninth? I mean, just a...
I think it's typical, where you, I guess you used to have the school committees.
On one twelve.
Oh, one eighteen.
Oh, the high school?
Yeah, the twenty-ninth, we're gonna be one eighteen.
Oh. No, I, I thought it was central office.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be central office on, uh, the twenty-ninth, for the workshop model, and then the school committee will be one one eighteen.
Great. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Submoved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have two motions to adjourn and one second.
Poof.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.